I'd call this board meeting to order. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. Welcome. And mind everyone about your cell phones if you turn them off or put them on vibrate. First thing up, we'll have a silent moment of silence. Excuse me. All right, if you would join me with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Is there any changes or comments on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Tammy, second by Mickey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a citizen's comment. Have two people signed up. First is Melissa Neal. Going up. Each person has three minutes and a clock over there.
Okay.
At the end of three minutes, a little door under there opens up and you get to go to the parking lot on a slide.
He's kidding.
Okay, good. Good evening. My name is Melissa Neal. I have a home at 108 Island Lane in Huddleston. I believe it's District Two. So I'm here today, or this evening, because I believe the county has contracts and permits in place with contractors to be able to come out to our properties and our private roads to be able to do and install fiber optics cabling. And about two years ago, the county hired a contractor by the name of Zidell to come on our private property and our private road to install fiber optic. We were given no notice. I know we're not needed to give notice, but we were given no notice, no notification. To our knowledge, they gave or didn't get any notice from the health department, or they were not notified. When Zidell came onto the property, the homeowners there did let them know that we were on a septic system. And they continued to tell us that they did their diligence and they dug on our private property, specifically mine, and went ahead and did their digging. Soon after, we noticed visible damage by the means of sinkholes in front of my property. And you do have packets there, you have pictures, that I have lots of different pictures there. You can see the sinkholes. I called Rodney and asked him to come out and see this. He said that there looks to be no problem, so we went on with our day and said, there's no problems. Come months later, I got a health violation saying that I can no longer operate my Airbnb, which is what we use our property there for, saying it's a health violation that there's gray water sinking into our lake there. So these contracts that we had, or that you or the county has with Zidell is now not holding strong that they're going to help us taxpayers. The Zidell had hit our sewer lines and the health violation saying that us as homeowners responsible for what the contractors had damaged on our property. We had really no knowledge of what was going on as a homeowner. I have no idea who to call. We have no idea what to do here and nobody's helping us on what to do. So for me to be able to operate and get things fixed, we had to call reputable contractors to come out and fix this. So tens of thousands of dollars, that's my first page there. We had to hire reputable contractors to come out and fix the contractors' damages on our own. And we've called the county, we've called the broadband, the head of broadband. We've called many numerous people, and Ed will be able to show you that later. Nobody has helped us. So two years later, we still have not had any help, no help. We've had to come out of pocket to be able to fix this. And to our understanding, we're, contracts are in place, permits are in place to be able to help us taxpayers. I'm a homeowner. I have kids. I don't know why I'm having to spin my wheels trying to figure out who these contractors are and why I'm, as a homeowner, supposed to be paying for these damages. It doesn't seem right. Does that seem right? Would you guys want, as a homeowner, to come out and have to clean up somebody else's mess? Would you want that to happen to you guys on your property? I'm out tens of thousands of dollars and trying to spin my wheels trying to figure out who this is. To this day, nobody's helped us. It's very frustrating. So I'm here tonight to see if you guys can help us, put us in direction of who to talk to and where to go. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ed Craig Hill.
Good evening. My name is Ed Craig Hill and I own the house at 110 Island Lane in Huddleston, Virginia, District Two. I have forty-three years in the construction industry, twenty-seven of those years with Boxley right up the road. We had to work under VDOT regulations, which are the same or similar regulations Zidell is supposed to follow, particularly regarding damage and accountability. It is hard to believe our federal, state, and local tax dollars helped pay the contractor Bedford County hired, who came on our street, did not follow protocol, and then destroyed two Forest Main septic lines, mine and the Neal's, a thousand feet each, a thousand feet. And gave no notification, none whatsoever, all documented. Did not do what John Putney said that they were supposed to do, which was call the Bedford County Health Department regarding water and sewage lines. They was told by the neighbors prior to and during that their line, that air lines were in the right of way. Also, Zidell hit Southside Electric two times knocking the power off Air Street. That's all been documented by Southside. They have pictures, the whole documentation, if you need it. Trying to make sense of what happened, this is unbelievable, that our tax dollars paid your contractor you hired, came on our street, tore up our lines, and we had to pay, pay the money to fix all the, everything. So, trying to make sense of what happened, the Bedford County Health Department was called in for help and direction. The Health Department then turns and issues the Neal's, the citations you heard from the damage created by the contractor Bedford County hired. We had no choice and covered all the repairs. I shut down my house for five months due to the lake and other conditions. With no help from the aforementioned parties, we found Coastal Telecom's Certificate of Insurance with liberty and filed two claims. We were stalled and pushed aside by John Putney, Edgar, Rodney Gray, Corey Boraz of Horizon, and Jeff Smith of Coastal, two subs down the line. One of them didn't get paid seventy-five thousand dollars. So you think he has the incentive to help us hit him for more money? So he, we then got pushed down to Coastal, who the same thing happened to him, no incentive to help us. So we're fighting on our own and it took months and months. That's why it's taken two years, because we have had no help and we had to uncurb all this stuff ourselves. Rodney was no help. So, I know I'm gonna run over just a touch, but just bear with me with what's going on here. I'm almost done. So we were stalled by everybody. But, and now we've got our claim in with the insurance company. They're stalling on us. So since we're not in a position of exerting any pressure, this is why we're back here full circle to you, the owner of the broadband project. We're asking for your help to do the right thing again by stepping up and holding your contractor accountable. In your folder is a thumb drive with a clip about what Governor Youngkin said in an interview with Chelsea Childress, July 29th, 2024, on WSET News. Some of y'all are aware of that, of the damage in Forest, Virginia. And it's, he said contractors need to be held accountable for damage they get, they cause. We're owed almost forty thousand dollars for the blatant damage created by Zidell, which could have been prevented. It is hard to believe Bedford County would let Rodney Gray, who tried to, who did deceive us, he lied to us, told, told Melissa that there was nothing wrong with sewer, sewage coming up on the ground. Now come on. I swear, that's unbelievable. So, he, he did lie to us. I know that's a harsh word. And, and he told us he was indemnified, that he was untouchable. So we, we couldn't go to him with their insurance claim, because that's what he's saying. So anyway, we, we worked through that and go, went down the line like we were supposed to. We did everything we were supposed to. We didn't get a lawyer. I told John Putney, I told Edgar, I met with Edgar on 2/7/2024. We, we didn't want to make it messy. We didn't go to Dutch S E T. We didn't go to the State Corporation Commission. We didn't go to Tamra, who's, you know, Governor Youngkin's right-hand man over the broadband. We didn't do any of that. We just, we came to y'all for help. And then I get a text, my last text with John was on February twenty-four, February 26, 2024. That was it. He was basically told to not talk to us anymore. So we were out on, yeah, we're on Island Lane and we're on the island for sure. So we're back tonight and we're, the insurance is, we've done everything we're supposed to. We're, they're, they're done. They're, they're not, they're not gonna pay the claim. That's what they're saying. So we have all the prices in there for the work. We got Patterson, I know Ralph Patterson, and all the Pattersons. They, we had to cut everybody's driveways. We had a thousand feet. We got Joey Fouts, DDOT certified. The text I got from John, where he, he politely and politically, with help from his lawyers, cut us off and no more communication and said, good luck. It totally contradicts his news article here, July 9th, 2024, in the news in advance. And it's in your article. You can read it yourself. I'll show you the text, what he told me, and you read this. This is, this is basically what Governor Youngkin's saying. And, and, and he's telling us we're on our own. The average citizen has no recourse. What, what, what about somebody? The average Joe has nowhere to go. You heard from Melissa. And I know people that this has happened to, and there's no recourse here. You know, we're, we're out here fighting and we're, we're out forty grand. We didn't do a thing. They weren't even supposed to be on our street, according to Corey Boraz. No, according to Rodney said, told Melissa, they came on our street by mistake. Corey Boraz, who was shorted seventy-five thousand dollars, told me that they were supposed to be on the street. So who are we supposed to believe? Irregardless, they didn't do it, they didn't follow protocol, as I already stated. So, again, we're, we're asking for your help. Now, if we, we're, we're about back in the corner. So I know what to do. I know where to go and I, and I don't want to do all that. I've made my living here. I've supported Bedford County my whole career. Twenty-seven years Boxley, whatever you ask of us. We had people on your boards. I never missed an economic development meeting. Always transportation. I worked with Shannon Valentine to help. I was one of the guys behind the scene to help get y'all looked at for the train. So various road projects over the years, some, some of you agree with or disagree with. I helped, we took money out of Lynchburg's budget to get the, where John Watts, his Watts Patrolman, you know, went around the S-curves up there. A lot of people, that's a lot of money, but we straightened that out to keep, make it safe in the corridor movement. So those are the kind of things I've done and supported Bedford County, so we're asking for your support. All this information in here, we had to break down prices for the insurance companies. That wasn't good, it's never good enough, because there's no pressure put on them. So we know how to put the pressure on them. I hope that's not the path we gotta take. So please help us. We're owed, it's not quite forty thousand, but it's right at forty thousand. And we got the, we got several prices. We did everything that Todd Fowler told us to do. Now Todd had no choice but to write that citation. But it was a citation from damage from your contractor. And it went to us. We had to make an emergency repair for four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, right off the gate. There's nothing we could do. So we fit, we did the right thing and fixed it. Then after that, we had to replace the thousand feet of line and cut everybody several driveways. And that's where Ralph and, Ralph came in. So y'all know everybody. We got several prices. Everybody was consulted with, particularly the thousand feet of line. We talked to Falwell and Lynchburg. We had the line scoped. We had pressure tested. All that's documented. The line was compromised, the whole thousand feet. There are pictures in there where the cable goes right up one of mine or Melissa's line, goes right up the throat. You can't, you can't, you can't make this stuff up. If you want me to find, I've, I've already talked to Southside, which is like an act of Congress, but I finally got through to them. Rodney made me say, you need to get the dig numbers. Now you go try to get the dig numbers for projects that you are a citizen, a taxpayer. You try to go get dig numbers from this utility about somebody else's work. Try that. And I'm in the business and I, I got them and they're in your folder. I got every one of them. So it, this is a mess. So what I'd like to know tonight, you know, Edgar's known about this for some time. We're hitting y'all, this is, y'all didn't know this, we're coming out of the blue. So I don't know what protocol is, but we would like to, you know, I'd like for somebody, somebody needs to get back to us and I'd like to know when, when you go, I'm not gonna, you don't leave a business meeting without a date. Y'all know that, because this thing will keep going on in endless time. So how, how, how do y'all handle that?
We'll, we'll talk about it and someone will get back with you.
Okay. When can I ask?
I don't know that, but it, let's just say within two weeks.
Fair enough. Yeah, that's, that's reasonable. I'm not trying to pin it to the day, but we, we keep having everybody, we've had everybody tell us they're gonna do the right thing. They told us, every contractor except for Rodney, the other two contractors, said that they were gonna either pay out of pocket or submit the claim themselves. But when you're shorted money and treated like they were treated, with all the VDOT violations that Zidell, I know both district engineers, and there were all kind of violations that nobody wants to talk about that I know about, that, that were created by Zidell shutting the ZOB down, for example. One of them was for forty-five days, which costs the out-of-town contractors a lot of money. So there's a lot of stuff in this pack and a lot of things that if, if you took time to read it and talk to me after and see some of these other texts and things I got, you, you would be appalled at how we've been treated. And again, if this was in your street, your house, your neighbor, and you had to pay twenty grand each to fix something.
Okay, we, we'll, we'll get back with you.
All right, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up. Anyone else? Okay, closed citizen comment period.
Next, have the consent, consent agenda, Mr. Hayes.
All right. Mr. Chair, we only have one item on the consent agenda this evening, and that is a resolution authorizing the submittal and acceptance of an individual Public Safety Point Education Program grant from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. This is for the 911 center to send staff to some, uh, training sessions.
Any questions or comments? You, you have something to present?
No. Do you have questions?
Oh, all right. I didn't know why you were coming up.
I know.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, if there aren't any comments, any more comments, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. R-031025-01, made by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Tuck. Okay, is this, I don't need a force call on this, do we? Roll call, I mean? Yeah, it does. I'm looking on the wrong page. Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker? And Chair votes yes. Next, we have approval of the minutes. Any questions, changes, corrections?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Parker did send me two corrections earlier today.
Okay. Is that something we need to know about or?
Not really. It's more like typo, like things. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes that's corrected.
Motion made by Ms. Parker. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No public hearing tonight. Actions and discussion items. Don't see anybody's name on that, but of a consideration of a resolution authorizing the submittal of acceptance of the Public Safety Point Education Program grant from the Department of Energy Management. Who's presenting that? Christina?
So I stand before you to hope that you accept this resolution, approve it. But every year, for the past couple of years, we have done the multi-jurisdictional PSAP education program, which is where we take regional PSAPs, we each get five thousand, and we do regional trainings. So for the past two years, we've been growing it. And this year, we have, because of the quality of training, we're really known, Bedford County is known in the PSAP community for the region of having really good training programs because of this. So this year, we have eight jurisdictions now, the most we've ever had, and they're kind of excited by what we've been offering. So that's why I would like to approve this, so that we can continue being known for having great regional training.
Okay, any questions?
Is this a matching grant?
This is a reimbursement grant, same as the other one, where we provide the funds to VETM and then they, we tell them how much we spent and they reimburse us after we've spent it.
Okay. If no more discussion, I'm hoping for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move for the adoption of resolution R-031025-02.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, motion made by Ms. Tuck, second by Mrs. Parker, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have a consideration of a resolution proving the execution of a contract for county recreation facility, park, and area, and that will be presented by E.W.
Thank you. This request is for the Board of Supervisors authorization for the county administrator to sign the contract with Adams Construction Company. This would include the need for appropriation of additional funding in the amount of seventy-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and forty-seven cents. The county rec facility currently has off-street parking with a gravel surface and small parking lot with asphalt that is in poor condition. This issue has been identified as a priority by the Board of Supervisor, who requested this project to be bid as soon as possible in late twenty twenty-four. The project shall fix an existing drainage issue, paving the off-street parking, repaving the existing small parking lot, all off-street spots will be made to a minimum depth of twenty feet to ensure its safety while parking along Bedford Avenue. The invitation for bid was written by Parks and Recs Department, advertised, uh, January twenty-second, twenty-five. The sealed bids were opened publicly February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, with six vendors submitting. Adams Construction Company was the lowest responsible bidder upon review of all the bids.
Okay, any questions? No questions, good to go. Motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, and I'm glad to see this before us, to approve resolution R-031025-03.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Ms. Parker, second by Ms. Bainsley, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Next we have a consideration of a resolution authorized in this mission acceptance and appropriation of school resource office continuation grant application, and that will be presented by Sheriff.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Today the Bedford County Sheriff's Office comes to you asking that we continue the SRO, or School Resource Officer Grant, that we applied for in twenty-three, for fourteen new school resource officers, for thirteen elementary schools, and an alternative school. As of February the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, seven full-time officers and four part-time SROs have been hired, and we will hire our twelfth one in May of this year. It's going to be a part-time. So that's where we can be frugal with our money, if we can find part-time retired officers to help, uh, put these grants together. We do that as much as possible. All the salaries benefits up to the amount awarded for one year has also been asked for to cover a hundred percent by the grant, which will be the local match of thirty-one point three-two percent required for years two through four. The actual local cost of the two thousand twenty-six grant will be split between the county at twenty-five percent, and the Bedford County Public Schools at seventy-five percent, which is, was previously agreed upon. So we will ask you tonight that we be able to submit this grant by March the eighteenth.
Any questions?
I have a question. Um, Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Um, as, as I recall, each one of those school resource officers is provided with a fully equipped police cruiser, is that right?
That's correct.
So we're, we're talking about, um, twelve to fourteen fully equipped police cruisers, right?
Fourteen, yes, sir.
Uh-huh. Do you still feel strongly that they need to have these fully equipped police cruisers?
One hundred and ten percent, sir. And just, just for the board to know, they are not new police cruisers, they are hand-me-downs, if you would. Most of them averaging over a hundred thousand miles each, is what they are. Uh, some of them actually have a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy thousand miles on them. So that is not a new police car that you see out there, by no means. With that, as you, as you said, Mr. Davis, uh, I sent you all a big PowerPoint, that's what I ended up doing. So in January, when we had the, um, the ice storm, in February, when we had the ice and a snowstorm, we had those men and women come out to watch out over our citizens, because in the January, there was over ten thousand citizens without power. So we had our resource officers out there, uh, checking those communities out, checking those citizens out. We've got, uh, in that PowerPoint that I sent you are many cards from our citizens who thanked us for doing that, uh, is what they ended up doing, so you have all that in front of you at some point. Uh, but they were out, able to go out in their police cruisers, they were able to go out and check on our citizens, is what they would do, to make sure if they did not have power, we have things that we could power their cellphones with, so the senior citizens would be secure that at least they had power on their cellphones, and they could call in and let us know if their batteries were running down. We did the same thing in February, when there was over, I believe, fifteen thousand or so that was, uh, without power, and we did it in the snowstorm. We also had our school resource officers assigned to DSS, uh, because when schools are closed, our food pantries cannot get out, and, uh, they closed down also. Our, your DSS department went out and cooked, our school resource officers went out and fed those people. We delivered those, uh, that food to those, those citizens, our citizens in Bedford County. So those cruisers are very well needed.
Well, Sheriff, I certainly commend you and your land deputies and all for performing such wonderful community service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
How do you, how do y'all, how do you know about these people? I'm just curious.
What's that?
I mean, that need food and...
Uh-huh.
Stuff like that.
Yes, sir. So what we did, let's start with the ice storms. What we did was, we, I had a captain or lieutenant, uh, sit down, and we watched, uh, Southside, and we watched AEP, we knew where the, the, um, the citizens were in our county. So we sent those deputies, those school resource officers into those communities to get out and do a knock and talk. Hey, do you know if Ms. Sally down the street, is she on oxygen? If she is, then we had our fire and rescue come in and make sure that her, her oxygen was okay, because that's a state of panic. So it's through communication with DSS, they know, because our, y'all's Department of Social Services, uh, know when our food pantries are open, and when they're not, and who they feed. So it's a big communication, is what it is, between the food pantries, Department of Social Services, and your sheriff's office. So they would come in and cook and clean, and then we would deliver those, those meals for them. So it's all communicating with each other, yes, sir, which is a very rarity with some counties and cities, that they don't even speak to each other. Uh, we still have our communication. And just to let you know, on the school resource officers, I've been one of them, that's been advocating through the Virginia Sheriff's Association, and through all sorts, to the governor, to the public safety director, because DCJS, in my opinion, they know it, I've said it, stepped out of their line. Department of Criminal Justice Services is for training for officers, and that's it. They put a two-year requirement on that we couldn't put a school resource officer in a school. They would give us the grant, but put requirements on it. I have fought that all the way to the governor's office, and in January, we are now, uh, we are now interviewing, because we got a, a letter from Department of Criminal Justice Services, says, Department of Criminal Justice Services recently changed their grant requirements for the school resource officer program. Grant-funded positions are no longer required to have at least two years of experience as certified law enforcement officers. Any vacant position on your, in your agency, current SRO grant can be filled with a certified law enforcement officer who is at least twenty-one years of age. So we won that, uh, against the Department of Criminal Justice Services, because they told us we needed them, we agree we needed them, and that they put stipulations on us. You let me hire, you let me worry about that, is what I told DCJS. They're my citizens, I'll take care of them. And we want it, so, and we appreciate that, so. There you go, there's my two cents.
Well, we thank you for what you're doing.
Well, thank you, ma'am.
We hear from the community that you're not only, the school resource officers are not only protecting our kids, but they're also mentoring our kids.
Yes.
And they're educating them, and helping them be more positive, responsible citizens. And so, it's a, it's a broad range of responsibility, and we're very thankful.
Yes, well, thank you. If I may add just one thing real quick, please. Uh, in your packet that I sent you, if you, you will see a, a slide that looks like this, it's a PowerPoint, it'll tell you that not only do our school resource officers protect our children at school, they also cover two hundred and twenty-five sporting events. That's just your school resource officers. So again, not to belabor the point, do they need a police car? Yes, because that's, that's the first line of defense, is when you see that marked unit sitting there. That will deter you hopefully a lot. And they do a lot of other stuff, uh, but that's one that I wanted to highlight real quick.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, both.
Can I get a motion?
I'd like to move, make a motion that we, um, approve resolution number R-031025-04.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Bainsley, second by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. All right, we have no board reports, board comments?
Mr. Chair?
We need to start the clock on three minutes.
I met this week with two members of our Ag Board, who was, who are very concerned about a recent text amendment that we passed, we passed it unanimously. And the ma, the amendment applies to land that's in the AP or AR districts, zones that have water and sewer, um, but they're divided by the state-maintained road. There are very few of them that have these characteristics, but ones such as on Wells Road, there's one on forty-three. The amendment simply formalizes how the staff has long interpreted the zoning ordinances, allowing small percentage of parent parcels to be treated as two separate parcels that have water and sewer, water or sewer, when a state-maintained road goes through. That way that, um, if you're in the AP, you can build five single fam, family homes on either side of the road, on one and a half acre lots, or if you're in the AR, you could have ten on either side of the road. Importantly, this provision only applied, and, and Supervisor Parker asked about it before the vote, it only applies to VDOT dedicated rail, um, roadways that are currently existing. However, and Jordan, and, um, Jordan Mitchell said, yeah, that's, that's how he meant it. But we might want to look back and clarify it for the future, so that future boards of supervisors don't, um, allow this to, to spread. We certainly want to protect our AR and AP zones. And at that night, we also enforced road frontage requirements, where we closed that access easement loophole, so we were definitely making movements to protect the seventy-five percent of land that designated AP or AR from excessive development. We carefully follow Bedford County Comprehensive Plan, which allows for development on the east side of the county with water and sewer, preserving the rural character of our agricultural heritage for our community. That's seventy-five percent, that's AR, AP, we want to preserve that. So I recommend to the staff that we, to, let's revisit this, let's just make sure that no future boards can reinterpret that, and make sure it's for the existing roads currently. And if anyone in the public has a question, they can feel free to call me and talk about this.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I don't have any comments.
Uh?
Well, I, I'll just say one thing, uh, going back to Mr. Sharp, uh, I strongly support the, uh, taking away the money from the LRBA and putting it toward defending Bedford County from solar, the evils of solar. Um, and, and I'd like to point out to everyone, just real simply, shortly, that solar, uh, electrical generation is not a farm. It's the furthest thing from a farm. It's destructive to agricultural land, and, and as Mr. Tuck pointed also, out also, it's destructive to our natural beauty around our county. But these people are making a lot of money, taking advantage of calling themselves a solar farm. Um, they could call themselves a solar circus, anything else on the planet they wanted to call themselves, but by using the term farm, they hide under, uh, what farmers are protected by, and that is, uh, protection from, uh, the EPA and, and the Department of Environmental Quality, and on and on and on it goes. So I think these people need to be exposed for their underhandedness and, and shutdown, and it's appalling that anyone in Richmond would actually support these people. Hope I made myself clear.
You want to say anything? I, I do agree, well, we're not gonna make a decision tonight on the Lynchburg business, but we need to stay on top of what Mr. Sharp said, even if we could invite other counties to come on board, because we're gonna be facing, if, if Democrats get control of everything, it's over with. We, we're gonna have it shoved down our throats, so it wouldn't be too early to get some things going on right now, as far as getting some other counties involved, and let, see what we can come, get out of all this, because it's, uh, we're only one branch away from it happening. All right, any, no board appointments? Mr. Scully?
Up next? Oh, yes.
I thought it, let's see.
Just pass it over.
Oh, yeah, I skipped you, I thought you...
That's okay. But, uh, I did have one thing in the, the Central Virginia Transportation Planning Organization, which is housed in the Planning District Commission offices, uh, them, in partnership with VDOT, are holding, uh, a public meeting about some, to get feedback on some, uh, possible traffic improvements in the Forest area, specifically in the corridors of Paraville Road to Thomas Jefferson Road, from Ambassador Road to Cloverhill Boulevard, and from Enterprise Drive to Gravesmill Road. That there's a number of, you know, proposed, um, ideas, I would just say, ideas or concepts, regarding, some of them are some median, um, changes, some turn lane changes along Forest Road, some concrete islands to direct traffic certain directions. So anyways, this is just an opportunity to get some public feedback, there'll also be a, an online survey to get some, some feedback also. Eventually, VDOT will compile that information and, you know, meet with the Board of Supervisors to discuss if there's any projects that we want to pursue in the future. So anyways, that's Tuesday, March eighteenth, at the Forest Public Library.
Okay. Now, Mr. Scully?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, calendar and reminders?
Yeah, uh, well, we're, we're just in budget time, so we will have a budget work session next Monday evening at five o'clock. Uh, we'll also combine that with a special called meeting to talk about the animal shelter, but, uh, we'll get into a little bit more details into the budget, and, um, then we'll have a regular meeting on March twenty-fourth.
Mr. Sharp?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.